We'll call the meeting to order. Superintendent Sampson will not be with us tonight. He's taking a family trip. Brenda won't be with us this evening. She's fallen ill. And Jolynn will try to be with us, but she's getting back from her vacation trip. And at last report was making it through the airline confines. So we do have a quorum, so we'll continue on. Would everyone please rise, face the flag, and join us as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intolerate Republic, first stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, unless somebody has something directly for the agenda, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Schedule presenters, we have two this evening. Heather Leschke will speak to us about DC Williamsburg trip on April 6th through the 10th. Heather, the floor is yours. If you'd come up and get far enough away that the camera can see you, that'd be great.
Yeah, so my name is Heather Leschke, for those of you that don't know me. I teach in the high school, social studies, primarily civics, advanced placement US history, and advanced placement US government. So this is kind of coming from students that really want to take this trip. They have asked if I could arrange some kind of trip that has both government and historical value to it. And so EF Tours, which is a pretty well-known tour group for a lot of schools, does happen to have a trip that goes to both Washington DC and Colonial Williamsburg, Virginia. So tentative, right now, we're looking at next April 2024. The reason why I pushed it off that far is because I don't want to compete with the humanities trip, because I know that the humanities and I would probably pull from the same kind of group of kids. The students that I would like to take on this trip would, they would have to go through my AP US history class or my AP US government class. So kind of relatively a small group. So for the 2024 trip, we were looking at my AP US history kids from last year, who will be AP government seniors, and then my APUSH kids, sophomores this year, who will be juniors next year. The tentative dates right now are anywhere, the window kind of is April 4th through the 12th, although we would like to do the 6th through the 10th, but we need to be a little bit flexible just in terms of flight dates and things like that. And then, yeah, we would spend a few days in Washington DC and then a few days down in Colonial Williamsburg to bring in that historical element piece. So we are, or I am here on behalf of all of them to ask for permission. Right now, they are estimating me a cost per student about $1,900, including the airfare, the hotel, all the, basically inclusive, all-inclusive. Yeah, considering when I first started talking to EF Tours, he was quoting me about $2,300. So I'm not quite sure what he wrangled, but he was very excited when he called me the other day and said that he was able to get the price down to $1,900.
How many could you foresee go range?
Yeah, so if I'm looking at the two groups that I had mentioned previously, the number is somewhere around 27 students. Right now, we had 10 families that signed up for a Zoom meeting of interest. And then, of course, that kind of got pushed back with all the state activities that were going on last week. So we'll send out another, you know, soundbite about we've got this meeting coming up to get more information. And that's actually this Thursday, November 17th at 6:00 PM. So it'll just be a Zoom, talking about the trip, what the cost covers, what's all included, when we would leave. So what EF had registered a week ago was 10 families. And so it's possible that more now that we don't have any state participation issues and things like that could have joined on kind of last minute. But they tell me that 10 is the magic number that I have to have at least 10 to make it.
That's what I was gonna ask.
And 10 works for the.
10 minimum.
And funded by how?
Primarily, it'll be funded by the students' student families. I haven't, because I don't have base numbers yet in terms of who's coming. I haven't, we haven't even talked about any potential fundraising and things like that. So right now, it's, I'm just planning on families. And again, we're this far out. I think if you break it down, it comes out to like 100 bucks maybe a month. You start putting it away now. EF also has this nice kind of online site where family and friends can donate to the actual student, especially with the holidays coming up. They could put money into the student's account specifically through EF and bring that dollar amount down for that student too. So if we can get this out, you know, prior to the holidays, that might be, you know, a gift idea for somebody, a particular student.
Certainly, one of the areas of concern always for a school is funding it and our participation, which doesn't sound like we will be other than to put our stamp of approval on it, if you would say so. Any other questions for Heather?
Do we use the scholarship for, pre-reduced at all for trips like this?
As a rule, trips like this that come outside of the confines of the school belong to the individual. We've done several, you've done it. You've done some other civic related things in the past, worked real hard to get the kids going. Through no cost to the school, so it's been a good relationship, Heather.
So if you were to do fundraising, you would come back?
Yes, definitely.
For that particular. I'll move to approve.
I will second.
Moved by Bill to approve. Seconded by Katie. Other discussion?
I just think it's a great opportunity for the kids who want to see it firsthand.
Done good things with the other trips.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the Williamsburg trip? Tentative dates of April 6th through 10th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second scheduled presenter, Paul Seneschal. Did I pronounce that right?
Yeah, you got it. It's pretty rare, actually.
Paul is here for a 2024 National Parks Tour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah? Thank you. So I'm here on behalf of the eighth graders. I got introduced to this by Riley Bukhite, who was here the past three years. And he did a trip to Boston last year and had a super great experience with it. Got me in touch with his guy. I got on it too late to get this summer for 2023, so this will be for next summer. It's a national parks trip. They fly into Las Vegas, they go see the coral pink sands in Vegas, and then they spend the majority of the rest of the time in Utah, going to Bryce Canyon, Zion, then they go to Grand Canyon, and then they fly out of Sedona. Five-day trip. You guys got everything there? The itinerary, price for students is $2,250. I think we got a lower price because there was more than one person doing it. So that's why we got to reduce price, otherwise this was almost three grand. When I was looking at it for 2023 and then doing it for 2022, it dropped down to 22 for students.
Any idea how many could part, or would participate?
Yeah, so I kind of, I got the ball rolling, got the ball rolling, and then realized that I wasn't gonna be able to get it to the board in time to get it for 2023. So I had, we had 27 families signed up for just the Zoom meeting. I communicated with a lot of families individually, and they seemed really, really excited about this. Yeah.
You see concerns with not competing activities that, like Heather has, but certainly back-to-back? Are we dealing with the same kid or are we?
No, I think you said eighth graders.
Yep, so I'd offer it to eighth graders this year. They'd come to this meeting, and then I would start talking to seventh graders for next year to see if they were also interested. And then we kind of have, our first trip of this would be a big mass of kids, and then we could start doing it eighth grade. I'd like to make it every year trip, just kind of have it available. I think it's really cool to get down to the southwest. A lot of what we talked about in eighth grade is like earth, whole earth history, and it's all in the rock. And being able to get to Grand Canyon, it's got tons of layers, Bryce Canyon. You kind of get to see the history of North America in these rocks.
Okay, I was just gonna ask how it tied all together to.
My high schoolers are upset that I'm not offering this to them.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
How many chaperones or adults do you figure you need? I mean, it just depends on numbers.
It depends on numbers. So EF says they want to have for sure one chaperone for 10 kids. And so for every 10, you get a free pass essentially, like a free ticket for an adult to go. And if I pick teachers, they don't have to pay for background checks. But if parents want to come, then they have to get all approved and everything, but then they get their ticket free.
Okay.
Other questions for Paul?
Summer programs?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be like the third day of summer is when we would leave, third or fourth day.
So do you see that it'll lean into an issue with some of the kids that?
Yeah, it's just not available for them, is what you're saying? I do see that. I guess I didn't really think about that. But I don't know, how would you combat that?
Well, it's not real combating, it's probably looking at it more in the context of what your group is.
Yeah.
Going to be, and so that 27 maybe gets adjusted.
Yeah.
And maybe needing to expand.
Yeah, so we had the same dates, but for last year with those 27 that were signed up. So.
I think that next year.
But don't you think it's far enough in advance that?
Well, it's just what activities in that age group, you know?
Oh, you mean like the postseason?
The choices they have to make between the trip and the extra.
And extracurriculars, just something to think about.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Well, what's your pleasure team?
I think it's a great opportunity to see something firsthand that they've been learning about. And I would say it would be, what is your minimum on here for students that you have to have? Is it the same, like 10? Okay. And is it funded by?
Yep.
Again, funded by the families?
Yeah.
I think it's a cool opportunity, any type of travel for these kids. So if, you know, I would say I would approve of it.
Is that a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Sorry.
Motion by Katie?
Just a little chatty.
Second. No, that's good. Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the 2024 National Parks Tour as discussed with Paul? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wish I could do that.
I've never been there.
I haven't either.
Wrapping in the Colorado River. You could walk, you could go to, there was some, the Level Observatory.
It looks amazing.
Level Observatory where Pluto was first observed.
Wow. Yeah.
That's why I was going.
Okay, moving on. Student School Board rep report. Nathan, you're up.
Awesome. So there's actually quite a bit that's happened over the past few weeks. So I'm sure I missed a few things. Always check out The Lantern, always a great opportunity to learn about what's going on in the school. But on October 25th, FFA members departed from Cannon Falls and headed to Indianapolis for their national convention. And supposedly, there was like 65,000 students there, which is crazy, from all 50 states. So that was a great opportunity for them. There's gonna be a long-form article published in The Lantern with more information about that and what they learned, so you should definitely check that out. And then they're also selling fruit, I believe tomorrow is the last day you can pick up fruit from them if you're interested. On October 28th, the choir and band had their concert, their fall concert. It was great to see the talent and everything and all the practicing they've been doing and show it to the community, so that was pretty cool. The student council corrected around 350 items for their We Scare Hunger program that they did, that we do each year. We just hand out slips to a certain neighborhood in Cannon Falls, and then people set out their food on the doorstep, and then we just run around and pick it up and then drop it off at the food shelf. So that was really awesome that we, that worked out last year. We didn't have as much, so this year was nice to have. The food shelf lady was really happy to see that, so that was really awesome. And then on November 4th and 5th, the theater department put on their fall musical, Footloose. It was really awesome to see all the talent, and they put a lot of work into it. The community members definitely turned out for that, so it was really awesome to view that last weekend. And then on Election Day, the AP Government class ran their mock election. We do that every year, we get materials from the state of Minnesota. So there was voting booths for each student. So that was a nice practice run for students, you know, because it's kind of their civic responsibility when they get older to vote. So it was a good learning curve for them. If they had any questions, of course, they could ask, you know, AP Government students. So it was really good for them to kind of get familiar with that. And then on Veterans Day, we had our ceremony that we do each year. It was really awesome. The students always, you know, behave very well, and they're very reverent. It's great that we recognize everyone that served in our community year is serving. And then we get to sports. So the football team advanced to the state tournament after beating Plainview Elgin Millville. I believe it was 50 to 6, I believe. So that was a really awesome game to go to and watch. And then on that same day was also the blood drive. We collected 45 units of blood, which is capable of saving 135 lives. So that was really awesome. It seems like every year, the blood drive falls on the section football game. So all the football guys can't, the coach is like, you can't donate here because you won't feel too great. So, see, but the musical was on that day too, so we could have probably gotten a few more, but it was really awesome. So then the football team advanced to the state tournament. They had their state quarterfinal game in Hastings, and they lost in the last two minutes to Watertown Mayor. But it was, they had a really great season this year. They definitely lived up to their all-gas, no-brakes theme, so that was really awesome. It was a little emotional, but it was, they had a really good season, so I'd like to recognize them. And then the volleyball team, pretty much unstoppable this past state tournament. They won their section championship title for the second time in a row after beating Zambroda Mizepa at the Rochester City Center. And then they advanced to the state tournament at XL Energy Center. They played on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and they won all of their games in the first three sets. They played against Pipestone first, and then they played against Annadale, and then Pequot Lakes, I think that's how you say it.
Pequot.
Pequot Lakes, and they won all those 3-0. So they won their first state title, which was really awesome. The whole community turned out for that event. It was a really awesome experience, and we're really proud of them. And then Madison Burr, Kelly Johnson, and Carson Winchell earned the Hall of Tournament Team Award at the state tournament, so, yeah. Really awesome, really proud of volleyball teams, so, yeah.
It's a lot.
I know.
Good job.
We have commented the past, the activity range that we have at our school. That is really second to none. You may not know that, but once we get out into.
Especially for our size.
Yeah, for our size.
We are as good as it gets, and so we're not even getting into the busy time of season quite yet either. It's gonna come, so, thank you. Is that it for us?
Yep.
Thank you. School Board Committee reports. Does anyone have anything for the cause? I did attend the GCED meeting, and some of the information was delayed because three of the six representatives were up for election. And so they didn't want to move forward on other things until January. So the, really, the bulk of it was a guy named Wes Johnson, who was the coordinator for early reading interventions and dyslexia specialists. He developed a program for our GCED students from our six districts. And he implemented it in a, I guess a practice run, I would call it, with one of our member schools that has had some reading issues and seen, and has seen significant progress there. So it's still being formulated, it's still being worked on, but the preliminary numbers look really good and really improved. I think three of the members, more might have been on the election ramp, but three of them will change. Kevin Anderson from Kenyon Wanamingle is retiring. And the Red Wing rep, and the Zambroda rep are no longer, didn't win their election, so they will be replaced, I guess if you will. So good, good information, excuse me. And I'm subbing for Katie on that, so it was a.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I'm a little far behind on some of the things that go on, but Katie, I have more information from you from.
Oh, perfect.
From one member, so.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything? Administrative reports, we really don't have our administrators with us this evening. As a rule, you could, by the way, you can see all the reports in there, but I wonder if we could just take a moment? And Bill, you could look at that superintendent's report and read those top three items that the superintendent, I think, likes to note, those type of things.
Sure, sure. He's got the school forest project. Gemini is donating professionally-made signs for our school forest. It'll be signage throughout our forest that marks trails, adds an educational component, and provides pictures of kids using our forest. That's awesome. Construction update. CCC roof project should be wrapped up by this board meeting. Bid opening for our project next summer will be on November 22nd. We'll know a lot more about the finances after that. And then congratulations to the football and volleyball teams. And so at this point, he had written it before the results, but just that they were making it to the state tournament. We did have a facility meeting. I think it's been since our last board meeting. And we met with the representatives that were assisting us, IEA, IEA, and Cross Anderson. Things are moving forward. There is some mild concern to general concern that materials are going to be in short supply. And if they are in short supply, how that affects our total budget. But at this point in time, they're pretty optimistic. I think the bids on the roof came back slightly less than what they thought. So then you can transplant some of that gain, if you will, into another project. So they're optimistic they can get it done for the amount and stay on course. But again, materials are the big thing. So not much highlight there. No one else? Okay, let's turn the page. Again, you can take a look and see what the administrators have to say. There's a, looks like a busy, busy time for the school once more. Nathan, you told us that. Public input, if anyone wished to speak to the district, you have up to five minutes. You know the drill, I guess, so. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, we'll close public input. We have no old business. Under new business, consideration to approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district, general and special election. This is more of a review and acceptance of the board once the review, the results that have been given to us, correct?
Yes.
So if you'd like to take just one minute to take a look at the results, you certainly can. But once you do, we'll need a motion and a second, so Katie can read the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion?
All right. Resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general and special election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, State of Minnesota, as follows. It is hereby found, determined, and declared that the general and special election of the voters of this school district held on November 8th, 2022, in conjunction with the state general election, was in all respects duly and legally called and held. As specified in the attached abstract and return of votes cast, a total of 6,138 voters of the district voted at said general election on the election of three school board members for four-year term vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first Monday in January next following the general election as follows. Bill Thompson with 1557 votes, Chris Dobson with 375 votes, Matt Bellford with 705 votes, Mark Lund with 851 votes, Lori Anne Clark with 764 votes, Pamela Collins with 874 votes, Amber Garrett with 574 votes, Clinton Showquist with 2,146 votes, Luke Winchell with 2,353 votes, and 22 write-ins. Luke Winchell, Clinton Showquist, and Bill Thompson have, having received the highest number of votes, are elected to four-year terms beginning on the first Monday in January 2023. As specified in the attached abstract and return of votes cast, a total of 6,138 voters of the district voted at said special election on the election of one individual to fill the vacancy in the term of school board member expiring January 6th, 2025, as follows. Peggy Decker with 693 votes, Jolynn Williams with 1955 votes, Marlo Pranky with 821 votes, and write-ins were 17. Jolynn Williams, having received the highest number of votes, is elected to fill the vacancy in the term of a school board member expiring January 6th, 2025. Said individual shall take office as soon as he or she qualifies. The clerk is hereby directed to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located, in whole or in part. So it will be a roll call vote to approve the canvassing returns of votes of the school district and general, special election.
Motion, seconded first.
Yeah, we got a motion by Katie, seconded by Bill.
Yep. So the roll call vote would be Bob? Luke?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Okay, that passes by a 4-0 vote. Next new biz item is a resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. So essentially, we're authorizing the clerk or her designee to take care of the certification. So we would need a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second that.
Bill on the second. Any other discussion? Okay, clerk, when you're ready.
Resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Whereas the board has canvassed the general and special election for school board members held in conjunction with the state general election on November 8th, 2022, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 252, Cannon Falls Area Schools, State of Minnesota, as follows. The chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 to the following candidates. Luke Winchell, Clinton Showquist, and Bill Thompson, who have received a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first Monday in January next following the election. Based on the results of the canvass, the chair and clerk hereby authorized to execute the certificate of election on behalf of the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 to Jolynn Williams, who has received a sufficiently large number of votes to fill the vacancy in the term of school board member expiring January 6th, 2025. Such individual shall take office as soon as he or she qualifies. The certificates of election shall be in substantially the form attached here too. The certificates of election shall be in substantially the form attached here too. Uh, after the time for contesting the election has passed, and the candidate has filed all campaign financial reports required by Minnesota statutes, chapter two eleven A, the clerk of the school board is hereby directed to deliver a certificate to each person entitled thereto personally or by certified mail. The clerk is hereby directed to enclose with the certificate a form of acceptance to, of office and oath of office in substantially the form attached here too. So for the vote for approving the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other elected election related duties, um, Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
I think that passes by a four zero vote as well. Yeah.
It's a lot of reading.
Easy lady, yeah, it is. So we have eighty-two hundred registered voters in our district.
That's amazing.
And sixty-one hundred plus voted. My Dodge Center, Mass, is seventy-five percent of the people in our district voted.
That's amazing.
Last spring, there was a gentleman who stood up during the uh, referendum results and was not happy with the number of people who voted. And quite honestly, I don't think any one of us were, we'd like to see more people get out there and vote, but certainly on a national, state, and even a local level, there was activity galore here, and it gave people a chance to get out and speak. So seventy-five percent is phenomenal on a presidential year.
Right.
So hats off to our local taxpayers. Does anyone else have anything for the cause this evening? My congratulations to you.
Yes.
And once more, I, I, I did reach out to you and uh, just reinforce that you stand on the shoulders of other people who have made the district what the district is. And I think the community says, keep doing what you're doing and expand and grow on that. So it's, it's a good message for us, it reinforces that we're doing a decent job here, our scholastics are good, but like everything, we can do better. So we keep working on that, we keep moving forward in a positive direction. So with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are finished.